Okay, folks, we're giddy because we're together again in person finally, thank God. I'm going to call to order at 6:04 the May 20th Silver Lake Regional School Committee meeting. I will ask if there is any public participation this evening, and we do have Area 58 here tonight taping us as well, so thank you very much for that. Can I, will I know if there's any public participation virtually?
Can we be able to, can you see if there's anybody? I have the link for it. When I go to my phone. Can you hold for one second?
Sure.
And we'll see what's going on.
While we're checking, we could just review the minutes perhaps? And once we've done that, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion now if people are ready. I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of Thursday, April 8.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion of them?
Come, give me a second.
Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Very good.
There you go.
Thank you. Gordon, we approve the minutes.
Aye.
Thank you.
This is just the list of what we get from materials.
Lucas, second. Thank you. Lisa, can you tell me if there's any public participation virtually?
There is nobody.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Principal Gill is...
She will not be in attendance tonight, this evening, but she has left her report, and Principal DePeel has agreed to share it with us tonight.
Oh, double duty, Jim. Thank you.
I'm here for both. For Gill, Ms. Gill apologizes that she cannot be here this evening, especially since it is our first in-person meeting in over a year. She is attending the KIS event this evening with her daughter and asked me to read her notes. She's available by text message. If there's any questions that I need to follow up for, I can text her, and she said she'll be available. So the first thing is dual enrollment. Earlier this year, a subcommittee was established to formalize our dual enrollment policy. Leslie Ann helped to spearhead the committee, and through school council, the following policy was established. Juniors and seniors may be eligible for participation in the dual enrollment program. This program allows students in good academic standing to enroll part-time in colleges or community colleges and take courses that will aid in their growth or progress. Students may earn college credits, which are also applicable towards high school graduation for courses taken at an accredited college or university with the approval of their parent, guardian, and the principal. Students should seek eligibility requirements and application information from any college or university offering dual enrollment opportunities. There's the responsibility of the student, parent, guardian to pay for the courses and associated fees taken through dual enrollment, and provide transportation to and from the college. While courses taken outside of Silver Lake Regional High School may apply towards graduation requirements and will be reported on the high school transcript, they will not be used in the calculations for GPA. Last, a passing grade will be required to earn related high school credit and graduate requirement replacement. Mrs. Gill is asking the school committee to vote on accepting this policy, and if approved, it will be added into the student handbook.
Okay. Do we have a motion for it, and then perhaps discussion?
I'll make the motion that we approve Mrs. Gill's proposal for the dual enrollment program.
Second.
Second, thank you. Discussion? Any questions?
I just wondered if there was any, like, attendance caveats of, like, they would not be marked absent from the school building if they took a course during the school day, or did they have to take it outside of the school day, or?
I could check on attendance, but I would certainly think that the high school would accommodate, if they're sitting there saying this is a course requirement, that attendance in that class would be accommodated by the school in any way. So what you're saying is if they had to leave at, say, 12:30 to attend a class, that they would be able to do so, whether it be remotely or...
Yeah.
So I would think that the school would still consider them attendance, but I can text Mrs. Gill and verify.
What's the threshold for a passing grade?
So passing grades for school is F or D. Anything above an F is a passing grade. Doesn't specify here what a passing grade for the classes, but if they say passing grade, it usually means a 60 or higher, which is a D or higher in the grade, D, C, V, A.
Sometimes that threshold's higher at the college level, isn't it? No?
Usually it all gets just averaged into the GPA. I'm sure there are some colleges that might say anything below a C could be, you know, a C or better is a passing grade, but most colleges, either the colleges that I've attended, which is Northeastern and UMass, all grades count. Credit-wise, if anything, a D or better, you receive credit in class, but it would get averaged into your cumulative GPA.
The only other question I have is, and this might be getting into the weeds, what do the, the student works with a guidance counselor if they want to participate, if they plan to do this?
I would definitely think the guidance counselor would be involved, because they're the ones who are kind of like the keepers of the transcript for each child that we have in the high school. So I would say that they're probably instrumental in that conversation. They certainly have been way back when, when I was an administrator at a high school, and we had a dual enrollment with Riviera College, and it was coordinated through guidance, administration, and the colleges. And they coped back and forth, and then the grades came back to guidance. Guidance evaluated the grade and then put it back into the child's transcript.
It's a wonderful opportunity for the students to get a jumpstart on college.
I think it's a great opportunity for our students to get a jumpstart in the colleges. It's an opportunity for them not only to earn credit in our high school, but really reach out to the next level and really propel them forward in their career. I think it's a great opportunity to give them that opportunity. I mean, I applaud the efforts for Leslie Ann and Principal Gill.
Yeah, I would agree.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chris?
Oh, my understanding of dual enrollment was a course taught on campus that again gets credit externally, as opposed to what this sounds like is an external class that gets credit internally. Are we looking at this differently now? Do you have any clue? Or am I thinking of dual enrollment in the wrong fashion?
So some forms of dual enrollment, or there are sometimes online courses, or sometimes there is someone who is affiliated with a college and can offer a course, and students can get credit that way. So yeah, sometimes dual enrollment could mean that the student is actually in the building and is taking the course through someone who is affiliated with the college that can grant college credits.
Right, exactly.
In this particular policy, they've written it such that should, and I think it's because at this time we don't have anyone who is affiliated with a particular college or university that could grant college credits, they've created a caveat that if you need to travel off of campus, that the student and guardians assume that cost for travel. So that that cost would not be taken on by the school district to provide transportation for students to attend classes that take place off of campus.
So the cost of the course would also be on the student's tab as well? Okay. Is that different than just the conversation being framed, I guess?
And sometimes in the past, high schools offer things like VHS courses, or they form a collaborative with other school districts, and teachers offer online courses, and they're either at low cost or no cost to students, but there perhaps might be a seat charge for the school that's involved in it. And students have taken online courses through those platforms, but they're not necessarily affiliated with a college or university. They're an opportunity for them to take courses that they may not be able to take in their current high school.
Just one last question.
Neither one of them are here to answer this question, but will this affect the AP course offerings at some level when this process moves forward? Are we going to review the courses we offer, and what courses are offered through the colleges that Silver Lake associates with?
I mean, I can't speak for Michaela and Leslie Ann, but certainly the way that this is described, and I've certainly seen it, like I said, at Nashua High School South when I was there, and we did a partnership with Riviera, that some of the classes offered, you know, would be similar classes to a student's AP course, but there's, I mean, AP is Advanced Placement, in which case they're getting credit from the college or university. They're still doing it, but they're doing it directly with the university. And from her description, I think, you know, obviously Chris is reading that accurately, that they're saying that they could take it at a university as long as they take on responsibility of transportation to and from the college. And I'm sure, you know, as we all know, I mean, online classes are certainly applicable nowadays, and most universities offer online classes. So there could be an online class at the university, in which case they just may need a space at the school to take that class, and support from the school as they go through that class, so.
I just wasn't sure if this is, this would go to shift our offerings here. If we started to associate with certain colleges, would we change the model of AP courses and then turn around and use our teachers for other subjects and push the students towards the dual enrollment so it would open up other offerings here?
Yeah. But now, it's a very good question. If a student takes AP classes, though, in the high school at no cost, they can then test out of classes at the college level?
Some colleges and universities will accept your score for college credit, not all, but many do. The other added benefit is that those courses count toward your GPA. So I think that we will maintain an interest in AP in general. I think this offers some alternatives for students who maybe have exhausted some of their AP options, or have a unique interest that we're not able to offer here, but there is, again, because of the cost and the transportation, I don't know that we'll see a dramatic decrease in our course numbers. And, I mean, we could see some shifts. Could turn out to be very popular, but again, there is an added responsibility to dual enrollment that might not make it as appealing to the number of students that would have a dramatic impact on class sizes, namely cost and potential transportation.
I was just looking at more, I mean, I support the idea and opening up. I was just thinking more long-term. We went to support, you know, a computer program with, you know, Bridgewater State, and you opened up a course for junior and senior year so that they could start early on a computer science degree or something, where we're not, we stopped offering those courses, or some of those courses, to the students at the high school level, and pushed them, you know, to the college level and maybe work out a financial deal to cover some of those costs moving forward. It was just more of a long-term question, not to have an answer tonight.
Emily, and then Chris, if you don't...
I'm sort of building off that same idea. I didn't know, and Jill and Ryan, maybe this is you, and maybe it's more from Michaela, but would you envision also an opportunity for this to apply to, like, trade or technical schools, or more just on the academic side, whether we opt for students who might be enrolled in our vocational programs to continue to pursue kind of those? Or if you were thinking, like, not just what's on here, but just like, the next five years of our school history, you know, like, longer term, would that be something that you think would be possible or interesting for us to pursue?
So I think, any, if we focus on this particular policy, I think it's broad enough that any institution that offers college credit, with which many technical schools now offer, could also take advantage of these types of things. And I think the benefit in particular is when we're not able to offer a particular course or program here. I think that will be, I think that's where we'll draw most of the interest for these types of courses, because it's not possible for us to offer everything, or perhaps we are unable to find someone with a particular certification or expertise. But they wouldn't be denied that opportunity because they could enroll in a course through this type of program. So yes, I think there's an opportunity for a wide range of types of courses that students could potentially take advantage of. But again, I think, it seems strange to say this, but I think most of our students, right, it's odd to be talking about going somewhere else when we just really, I think a lot of our students are looking forward to just being back in their old classrooms, which is unhappy and sad to say at the same time, and it seems a little unusual to be talking about sending them someplace else, because we just want to keep them here right now, so.
Yeah.
Done the distance thing, and we like seeing them in person. We miss them. Chris?
Yeah, I think that goes to my point too, what you're saying. I like, I actually love the idea of dual enrollment. I don't like the policy here in front of us. I think it really could be used, as Jill said, for non-offered coursework here, but I wouldn't want to see this starting to get used for a US history class for a junior so that they can double and get a credit externally. I think the scheduling complication, if they have to leave for an 11 o'clock class somewhere else to get dual credit on a regular US history course, of course, an AP, it creates scheduling nightmares. So I don't know if I want to see students taking our course curriculums there. And my understanding of dual enrollment as well has always been a partnership with a specific college. Like, if a teacher here teaches a certain course and they get credit externally, like a Massasoit or Quincy College partnership. So I fully support dual enrollment, but this policy I don't think I do right now. It's just too open for me.
Leslie Ann coming?
She is. She's going to be late. Do we want to...
Do you want to table it?
Yeah.
She is fine.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Motion to table?
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I think you brought a lot of excellent points.
I'm sorry.
Say it, Chris. I thought he brings up a lot of excellent points, but...
Okay. All righty.
Okay. So the high school's full in-person return has been very successful. Mrs. Gill and her staff were thrilled to welcome back everyone. As guidelines continue to change and more restrictions are lifted, she is looking forward to even brighter days ahead. The Kingston Fire Department has generously donated a physio-controlled life pack, 15 defibrillators, to the Silver Lake High School. Refurbished life pack lists online for $6,750, bringing the estimated total donated value to $20,250. These units were donated because they are out of warranty for emergency use. Fire department has verified they are safe for demonstrations, hands-on learning, and will be used by students in our allied health program. Mrs. Gill requests permission from the school committee to accept these donations. So move.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I would just recommend sending a letter of thanks.
Absolutely. Okay.
She denotes that she will send a thank you note if all...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you. Mrs. Gill would also like to accept the donation of a 2001 Oldsmobile Aurora donated by Teresa Johnson of Rainham to be used as a teaching tool for the automotive technology program. A thank you letter will be sent from the CTE office. Motion to accept?
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
None?
Sophomores completed the ELA MCAS testing earlier this week and will sit for the math test next week. Twenty-nine juniors opted in to take the MCAS test this spring. They will also have an opportunity to take it in the fall if they want to be considered for scholarship opportunities. Freshmen will sit for the science exam in June. High school has also wrapped up AP testing on Monday. Mrs. Gill would like to thank her guidance staff for their efforts coordinating all of the testing sessions. Graduation will take place on June 4th, thank you, June 4th at 6:00 PM. Members of the Silver Lake, Kingston, Twinton, Halifax school committees are all invited to attend. Please email Mrs. Gill to RSVP. The annual senior parade will take place on June 3rd. Students will walk through the high school parade, around the middle school, and then take buses to the respective elementary schools for an outdoor parade. Mrs. Gill would like to thank the administration staff at the middle school, Kingston Intermediate School, Kingston Elementary School, Dennet, and Halifax Elementary Schools for their support. Although guidance has changed and many restrictions have been lifted, the annual senior awards still will be virtual presentation, unfortunately due to time constraints and scheduling. It will be released on June 1st for families to watch. Students can pick up their awards in caps and gowns on June 2nd at the senior breakfast. Mrs. Gill wishes to thank the committee for excusing her absence this evening and Mr. DePeel for his achievement. That is it from Mrs. Gill.
Very good.
Ready for me?
We sure are.
All right. So here we go. So my first thing on my list is the student handbook. So we had disseminated the student handbook changes last meeting, and I was just looking for a vote to approve our student handbook changes. So...
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Secondly is our MCAS update. So we will have an extended home room on Friday, which is tomorrow, to do our MCAS practice, which gets kids back into unison with the computer-based MCAS 2.0 testing to familiarize themselves with that. That will happen tomorrow, and then our regular MCAS testing will happen ELA for both 7th and 8th grade on Tuesday, May 25th. And then on Thursday, we will have math, May 27. And then a week from Wednesday, we will have, on Wednesday, June 2nd, our 8th grade science MCAS testing. We have disseminated all the information, you guys, to MCAS testing and the practice, and we are before that schedule. Other school updates, we had spirit week last week. So from May 10th to the 14th, we had our spirit week, back to our school with all of our students in the school. We had sports jersey day on Monday, TV show Tuesday, Hawaiian Day on Wednesday, Throwback Thursday on the 13th, Future Friday on the 14th. On Thursday and the 13th, I had switched back my hair, back to the 1950s, came in with jeans on, and that was my presentation for the fillback. Someone said I looked like the Fonz in my jacket. I hope that was a compliment. We'll see. So that was our spirit week. Glad to bring back some pieces of what we are starting to go back to in our school, that energy, that excitement. Couple other things for updates. We have Laker Ledger, which is our school newspaper. Clubs are now meeting after school again. We have our athletics meeting, our inter-scholastic with our track and field team, and we have the Laker Ledger and we have the Drama Club. Laker Ledger is our school newspaper. We expect to have at least one issue coming up for our Laker Ledger. We're very excited for that. I want to thank our students for working hard on that. And I also want to thank the advisor, Matt McKenzie. So that will be back. We will not miss a year without our school newspaper running, so that's great. We have our Drama Club. They're doing a performance, but it's virtual right now, but that's great. And then we also are looking at, because of the new regs that just came out that kind of changed what's coming up, we're looking at bringing back a modified 8th grade field day for our kids, based on the new safety regulations. And we're looking at maybe sometime in June that we can do that. I know, you're all excited. I mean, some of the things that we're seeing in our schools, that we're seeing with our students, we're seeing the faces, the engagement, the excitement, the things that we love about school, starting to come back to our school. And that's so rewarding. I mean, it's really been, you know, I don't want to get into that really, but, you know, it's been a difficult year, and it has been a lot of separation and isolation. We've all felt that. But I want you guys to know that recently, as we come back full in person, that engagement, that student feeling, energy, teacher feeling, energy, is starting to fill our schools again. Clubs, activities, those things that we all come to love for our kids, starting to happen again, and it's really exciting to have that come back. So I want to thank all you guys for your tremendous, you know, support this year. We've had to do a lot to get here, but it's happening. It's now. So again, we're looking at a modified 8th grade field day, so we can bring back some of that this year too, based on the new safety guidelines. So that's it for me. Thank you, guys.
And we thank you for all your hard work, too, in adapting and adjusting and making the best experience you can for our students.
Thank you. There has been a lot of adjustments for all of us this year, and I thank you for that. And all of it's worth it. So, thank you.
Excellent. Any questions or comments, Jim? Gordon?
We didn't talk about the mask mandate for the students.
I don't know if you would like, I can...
Can't hear you.
Would you like me to speak to the changes issued by the state, or the potential policy changes that the subcommittee will be?
I just, sure. I just didn't know if we needed to vote anything tonight, or even while we're getting the updates, if the regulations here relaxed, if they can...
So I will share that with you now if you'd like, or I can present that as part of the district update, whatever you prefer.
That's fine. It's brought up now, so.
So the Department of Education on May 17th issued a new set of COVID-19 frequently asked questions with updated information, effective Tuesday, May 18th, so the day before they announced it. The following day it was affected that students would no longer have to wear masks when outdoors, even if distance cannot be maintained, and adults must continue to wear masks outdoors if distancing cannot be maintained. At this time, adults and students must continue to wear masks inside schools. Students can now share classroom materials. In alignment with state guidance, the gathering limits for school events with outside participants will be lifted starting May 29th. And the FAQs were released on the heels of the governor's announcement that many of the Commonwealth's COVID-19-related restrictions would end on Saturday, May 29th, and that Governor Baker will end Massachusetts' state of emergency on Tuesday, June 15th. So one of the things we did was look at our current mask policy and language in there, and because social distancing is not expected for students outside, it's therefore in compliance with our current policy. Nonetheless, I have reached out to the chair of the policy subcommittee to take a look and possibly hold a policy subcommittee meeting. I've sent him a proposed date for a potential policy subcommittee meeting, because we have a number of COVID policies that ideally we would want to examine and make sure that we're able to shift when and if possible. And I think it would be ideal to try to find language that would allow us to do that without having continually having to amend the policies. So I know that Jason Fraser is working with MASC, and I know that Fred Dupere has also presented potential language for the subcommittee to consider with regards to masks. But as of right now, students are allowed to be outdoors without masks. Adults do not have to wear masks outdoors if they can maintain distancing. If they can't maintain distancing, then they have to wear masks. And we're still, we're still wearing masks inside schools at this time. I don't know that that will change prior to the beginning of the, the end of the school year, I should say. Based on the commissioner's meeting the other day, we're not anticipating that change prior to the end of the school year, but that doesn't mean it couldn't happen. but that doesn't mean it couldn't happen.
You might not know the answer to this, but how spaced are the kids' desks approximately in the middle and high school?
So when we returned to...
Now, now that everybody's back.
I think they're approximately three feet.
Everything's over three feet, nothing less than three feet. But there are some rooms, based on student population rooms, that might be like three and a half feet. But nothing less than three feet. And that aligns with the guidance that, when it regards to close contacts. So therefore, we still notify the parents if there's a child that, you know, has COVID that was within six feet of the child, but they don't have to go home and quarantine for that duration. Anything less than three feet, which we can't do anyway based on the guidelines, they'd have to be quarantined. For more than fifteen.
I'm asking more because I want the masks off the kids in the building. So that's why I want to know if they're, what their distance is. If they're, if they're six feet, then, you know, you have a stronger argument to getting them removed. That's why I was asking.
We were six feet.
We were hybrid, right.
Yeah, but then based on bringing them back together. Myself, and I've had conversations with Michaela, we both have kept at the three-feet line, obviously, and in our conversations with Jill as well. But we have reduced at some classrooms below the four-feet mark. So we're probably around, average is probably around three and a half feet probably in the classrooms.
Yes, go ahead.
So I'm assuming that we, as a committee, really can't make a decision until the policy Subcommittee meets, and then we can go from there?
Yes. Yes, and, but. It also has to be in compliance with state regulations and also with DESI regulations. So the... DESI order doesn't supersede our current policies legally. But, and I believe Fred has weighed in on this issue before on other issues, we have to comply with state regulations. We can't create a policy that would knowingly violate a state regulation, for example. So it's kind of a... Kind of have to work together to figure out what our next steps will be. And we have not only state guidance from the governor, but then there's also the DESI regulations, which are sometimes... Well, they're always specific to schools, but they're also considered the regulations that we have to follow within the school system. So sometimes the broader public notifications don't always apply in the same way to schools. And so that's why the FAQs come out to kind of add clarification to how that will be applied in the school settings.
Chris?
So I should be wearing my mask right now, I suppose?
I know.
You said, like, wait a second, I'm in a school here.
So it... Inside schools, we wear them during the school day with the kids, because not all of the kids are fully vaccinated. Again, it's... For adults who are fully vaccinated, I also know that we have information from the CDC. So that also said that adults who are fully vaccinated do not need to wear masks. So, again, we have a lot of information and it's confusing.
I just saw the split in the table and I was like... I'm missing something in my...
It's a very confusing time for all of us.
You don't have to have it on if you're taking this if you drink. Thank you, thank you, I'll do the straw.
But yet we can go to restaurants and, you know. So again, there's all, there's all sorts of things going on, and I would love to have a simple answer for you, but I don't have one.
So when we get the updated regulations, we're still going to have to have a school committee meeting to vote the information from the Policies Subcommittee?
True.
Which would be...
And as long as you do it...
Six days before the school year is over.
And as long as you do that before June 15th, we can do it online. After June 15th, those regulations go away and all the meetings have to be in person again.
So and there's some policies that may not impact our ability to comply with the regulations. But our concern is, it's been a while since we've looked at the policies. We want to just go through them and make sure there's nothing there that would prevent us from being able to transition.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, any other questions on that? Okay. That was a good question. So Jim, you are done. Okay. Do we want, go ahead.
Motion to pick up off the table the dual enrollment.
Very good, thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. So Leslie Ann? We were praising your efforts before you got here regarding dual enrollment. And we know it's been one of your passionate agenda items. We did have some questions about the policy that we decided to table until you got here, so that you could perhaps help us through them.
And I apologize, I, for some reason, thought we were in exact first and then full committee, so that's why I was, not, that's why I was a little late. I was finishing words.
Should I be handing those out now?
No. Okay, so I'm sorry, you have questions?
Okay. Chris, do you want to begin by explaining your thoughts?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So just my understanding of the concept of dual enrollment was more along lines of having a school, Quincy College, Madison Sawyer, accredit teachers to then stay on campus, teach for credit there, as opposed to as the conversation was going, I could have an 11 o'clock class Tuesday, Thursday at Quincy College, I leave school, have that fit into my schedule somehow Tuesday, Thursdays, to go down to Quincy College, self-transfer tuition, study for self-pay, but yet get back. Now I look at that and I'm like, well, that's like a class to get there, a class there on campus, another class missed coming back. That wasn't my concept of dual enrollment. So maybe you can explain how this would work, because this is very, very open.
Yeah, it is open. So this is a product of myself and Michaela and John Garofalo, so I'm not, I can't take credit for all this, but... So there are different models for dual enrollment, and you can do one, the other, or both. And dare I say hybrid, because, you know, we just love that term. And I'm sure that Ryan and Jill can chime in on this, because I'm sure they've seen some of these programs as well. Currently at Silver Lake, there are students who are enrolled in dual enrollment and have for, you know, the last several years, probably prior to that too. Most of them have been, correct me if I'm wrong, Jill, but most of them have been CTE students who have elected to finish their high school year at a college that they, or a trade school that they might have chosen to go to anyhow, until they don't. I mean, in your senior year, you only, the amount of credits you need really are required, if you're on track, to have a year of English, a year of math, and a half year of wellness, right? So it does provide a lot of flexibility in the other, let's just say, five and a half periods to do all kinds of other things, right? So there are schools that do it just as you described. So they have opportunities for high school teachers to get certified as dual enrollment instructors, sometimes in place of an AP class, or sometimes, you know, in addition to an AP class certification. And then there are schools that send kids off of campus to take their classes, if they so choose to. I know, like for instance, Farmstable High School does that. And, you know, the era of modified higher ed, I guess is probably a nice way to put it. There are still community colleges and four-year schools that are allowing students to take remote or hybrid-like asynchronous or synchronous classes for college credit. And probably did before, because it is for online learning, and will continue to do it in the future. They did it pre-COVID, not because of COVID, but it certainly has grown in popularity. My son's an interesting example, if anybody cares. Last fall, he's not a CTE student, he's a senior this year. And we elected to do dual enrollment for him at Quincy College for his English and his math high school senior level class. So he took a precalculus at Quincy College and a English Comp 101 at Quincy College, which offers, in this case, half-price tuition for high school students, which is great. And for him, it was online, because that's just the way that it went this year. But by the end of December, he had his entire high school year of math and his high school year of English completed. So he, within one semester, because it's a one semester course in college, is a one-year high school class. He's not taking English and math this semester, because he doesn't need to. He's taking other things that he's interested in. So in that case, would he have gone off campus to Plymouth if he could have? Yes, in fact, his English composition class was in person three times, so he would have left. So there is some complications, or there are some complications with that. However, one of the, I don't know how much they're going to employ it. We need to sort of come up with an implementation program, you know, if this policy or approach is approved. But I mean, it definitely has eased the transition into college for him, in the sense that he's essentially doing happier college before he even gets into college. And not only that, he's not having his college credit based on a test. So for instance, I'm not knocking AP classes, because I think they're wonderful and they are really rigorous and they're, you know, definitely college-level. But if you don't get a certain score on a test, you don't get that college credit, right? You get the rigor of a college-like class. But if you don't get a four, for instance, on AP Psych, a five, you don't get college credit in most cases. You get the fact that you took an AP class, and that's great. But it's all reliant on that one college board exam. And you know how much we all love college board exams or standardized tests? You know, it's tough. Imagine if they take one test to graduate from high school. I mean, they do, but they've been taken over a period of several years. I know this is a long story, but it's a big program, so I wanted to answer your questions.
Yeah.
In his Quincy College classes, he had to have a passing grade in order for it to qualify for high school credit. And it doesn't affect his GPA, so you can't go grade surf. You know, it's like you can go out to a community college and find the easiest class you can, get an A in it, and all of a sudden it's going to inflate your high school GPA. It doesn't work like that. You get high school credit for it, but you don't get, it doesn't impact, and it says in this policy, it doesn't impact your GPA. So now when he walks into college, he has two college classes plus his two AP classes, if he gets a certain score on the test. So, and I can tell you that for us financially, it's a lot cheaper to do the dual enrollment classes, especially for core, non, you know, major required classes than it is to enroll in college and take that same class. So for instance, the class we took at Quincy College, because the high school discount was like $500 for a three-credit class. You know, at any private university or even a state institution, you know, they're between $1,800 and $5,000 for a class. So just, that does provide some financial relief as well. So, you know, you have the Commonwealth Compact Program that kids can go to a community college for two years, and then when they have a certain GPA, they automatically are guaranteed admission into a four-year state university. Well, that allows children who, or families who don't have the funding to send those kids for those two years to a more expensive four-year school, to do that at a community college level. And if you can get some of those classes while you're in high school, that's great. One other quick thing I'll just add is, my daughter in Colorado, one of her best friends, came into college with 28 credits from dual enrollment in high school. And her mother happens to be the dual enrollment coordinator for their local community college system. She graduated college in three years, because she came in with 28 class, 28 credits. So financially, I think it's a benefit. And then in addition to that, you know, it gets these high school seniors, in some cases juniors, the flexibility to start learning what it's going to be like outside of a sort of every moment of your day is programmed instruction in what the college-level professors are going to expect from you, which is, not that the teachers here aren't incredibly rigorous, but, you know, a college professor has different cares about your, no offense, well-being or your situation than does, at times, a high school student, a high school teacher who is, you know, really looking at the whole student. I'm not saying colleges don't, I'm just saying, it provides them more of a real-life experience. So to answer your question, yes, we can get teachers certified to teach college-credit level classes for dual enrollment. And we can allow our children to leave campus and take a class, whether it's online or during the day, or they can take it at night, just like a lot of adults do. They can take a college class at night. The flexibility that this year has shown us is that, you know, my son now, who's 18, goes to school periods one and two, five days a week, because he's taking college classes and he can go out and work or take other classes in addition to that. So it's not exactly super formulaic, but those are the opportunities. And this policy, I think, will allow us to develop a robust program.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So the idea is, this is the first step, an open policy. And then you guys can work on implementation plan to try to bring in colleges as well?
That is my understanding.
I think that answers mine. And I was in a similar situation where I just needed to take two courses, and I was in approved independent studies for all the rest of the time that I was here.
Right.
And senior year, so.
Right.
If I could have taken college credits, that would have been ideal.
Right. And I have to give a lot of kudos to the Guidance Department this year and the administration. I mean, this has been a lot of, we're going to be flexible with our students. And there's ways you can benefit from that going forward. You know, there are lots of things we probably should examine, what worked, you know, and what's good. And I know Jill and Brian is probably on your radar screen, but this is, has worked pre-COVID traditionally for CTE students. But it can benefit the general population as well. And I think they should be allowed to do that. That's my opinion. It's my manifesto.
I guess I'll just, so one of the questions I had before is, do you see this as changing the way we offer AP classes? So that we, instead of offering AP, we have this program in place, and we take those teaching resources and move them to other places?
You know, I mean, if you, you know, I would speak for Michaela only because I've heard her say this at one of our meetings, is that, you know, you see schools kind of drift heavy towards AP, and then they drift heavy towards dual enrollment, and then they kind of try to find that happy medium. I mean, we're a pretty heavy AP district, which I think is great. And we're what, an AP Center of Excellence or some, we've got some things. So I don't necessarily see them replacing it. But there are a lot of poor AP classes that we offer here, but there are a lot of AP classes that we don't offer here, in the sense that, you know, there is a lot of AP classes. But if you were to take like, just going to throw it out there, like an AP Japanese class, which we don't offer, you could go to local colleges and take Japanese 101 if you were interested, and have it applied to your college instead. So I just think it's a level of flexibility we have to understand. And I don't know what Michaela and John's expectations are, interest are, in having this teacher certified. I think that's probably our next step, and clearly with Ryan and Jill talking that through. But at least we need to allow our students to go off and take half-price college. And I'm sure that Sheila Vaughn was here, she would argue heavily for this as well, because they offer at Quincy College, I mean, at Forests, and a lot of Cape students take advantage of it.
But a question I have, are the courses being selected typically non-Silver Lake courses? Or are we really like, like you're studying math and English. Those are courses we offer here, almost to the turn of the community here. We want 20 seniors going off campus to take their math course. This is sort of a question I have. Just like you could say, okay, why take an AP math, Calc BC, whatever it is, when I can go take Calc at, you know, a community college and be guaranteed to get credit? So I wonder how many seniors would then be, those seven are scheduled, they're down to three. And we have a senior class that almost becomes more of a part-time class.
Yeah, I would also say that, you know, on top of that, there are kids who want to go beyond the current curriculum that we have.
Right.
So, you know, there's a kid who has taken calculus, they want to take differential equations or something else. They should, you know, they have an elective period. Nothing against any of the electives here, but why, if that's their interest, why wouldn't they be able to do that? For us, I felt that, just in our personal experience, you know, I wanted to test whether my son was really capable of doing a college-level class. Not that the AP classes aren't rigorous here, but it's a big investment. And seeing if he could take a college-level English class, 101 versus a high school AP class, I was interested.
Yeah.
And that's my prerogative. And I think that it should be a parent's and a family's prerogative, whether it's for financial reasons or other reasons, to try some of those things out.
Go ahead.
So I guess my question would be more, for you, Chris, were you looking to potentially, like, model the program to be for students to take advantage of courses that we don't offer here at Silver Lake?
Yeah. That would be one of my concerns in a policy this open is that you have kids who just don't want to be on campus, but has the $500. They take two or three courses off campus and get credit for it, because that's sort of part of the purpose. But at the same time, it does make, I think, scheduling here maybe a little complicated, because we lose 10% of students, or 10% of the English students, or whatever you want to call it. As an additive for classes not offered, I think it's awful.
Yeah.
You know, if we can offer it here with our teachers and get credit externally and not have to, we can pay a nominal fee, a license fee, whatever it is, I think that's fantastic. I don't think I'm so excited about students going off campus for a course we offer. I think that's one of my hesitations to build into a policy here.
So, Ken, I heard you mention something. So, Ken, I heard you mention something, or both of you talk about, like licensing and credentials for students, for teachers here onsite. So is there such a program where like, instead of taking English 101, you could take the AP English and have that count as college? Like, and stay here on Silver Lake campus? So it could work both ways?
It can.
So would it be reasonable then to say that we should open the policy or program up for students to go only off-campus for programs that aren't offered here on campus? I don't know how long it takes for our teachers to get the certification. I guess I just don't know the details of how that works.
I see this as more an open policy to try things out and see what implementation comes up with. I mean, this just seems like this gives them the ability to move forward in multiple directions, try things out, and come back and report to the school committee what way that they really want to move forward.
Yeah, I think this for us is the cover sheet on an implementation plan with your, you know, that's our plan.
Yeah.
But I mean, we can't do that until, let's say this is the direction we want to go. So, and I would, I mean, I don't know what the statistics are, but they're pretty high, I mean, about how many schools, high schools offer this type of program. We would not be blazing a new path. Emily?
I would just say, I think I would be hesitant to put any restrictions on it, similar to what Gordon said. But also, I think about when Jill presented her findings from the year and kind of rethinking why we do the things we do and what we do. And I love the idea of a bunch of our seniors being off-campus and experiencing the role. Part of that college, it's not the rigor, it's the responsibility that no teacher is holding. Our high school teachers are trained to hold our kids accountable and to get in touch with them. And guidance follows up and we follow up. And, you know, we try by senior year to say, okay, you're independent, you're 17, 18, 19 years old, you should be doing this yourself. But college doesn't do that. I mean, college is like, show up, don't show up. You know, I mean, and not because they don't care, but because that's what life is outside of these walls. And I think it gives us an opportunity with this open policy to explore making a gray area between junior year and post-high school. You know, the same way we might offer programs in our evening for adults, that we can offer programs during our day for kids outside of this building and kind of what might that look like? And I think the more open it is, the more we can explore those. And so I would be very hesitant to put any kind of restriction into the policy in a few years when it's up and running. And if there's some massive reason we would want to, you know, I think it's something we would reevaluate. But even if 20 seniors said, we're going to take our English credit elsewhere, that's a whole class, like that's an English teacher now that's free. What could that English teacher be doing? You know, is there professional development? Is there another course? Is there an independent style? I mean, there's, you know, I think it does pose challenges for administration and I would never want to put more on them. But I think it also poses lots of opportunities for them to explore what we could do with that extra staff person now that has a whole class of students that are off-campus.
I'd also argue it's also potentially professional development for the staff themselves because they could be adjunct somewhere, you know, at a local college or university, you know. So, yeah, it is interesting you say that because, I mean, you know, we all had children in this, well, most of us have had children in this, graduated children from this school. I mean, Paula, you have, I have, maybe the ones.
Mine's a sophomore.
Yeah. But, you know, I don't know if you talked to your sons, but, you know, my daughter had a great experience here. I mean, awesome experience at this high school. But one thing she did say is, wow, you go from a very restrictive environment, understandably so, to a complete free-for-all. And to your point, some kids are on it. They got it. Some kids, like my son, I'm sure.
You know, I'll share with you. My boys went from Silver Lake to, both of them UMass Dartmouth engineering programs. So engineering's extremely demanding. And I echo the comment that was made that you go from an environment where the teachers are very detail-oriented and caring and know you and know maybe your learning style and your testing style. And they do a wonderful job of supporting our kids. Then when you get dropped into the college environment, both of my sons who are very, who were good students here and were very good students in college, both of them struggled that first semester to kind of get their arms around, their head around what they had to do now because it is a very different environment. It's loose, you either choose to succeed or you don't. It's a little confusing. The professors use all different kinds of communication mechanisms and the expectations are different. It's a very different environment. So I think one of the benefits certainly that was indicated was it's this gray area that you could sort of stick your toe in the water and kind of experience that with one class before you're a first semester engineering student and you're overwhelmed, quite frankly, with the change. I would, do you folks, is the game plan to perhaps, if this moves forward, implement this for September? Or is this a different term?
We already have students on dual enrollment for various reasons informally, not through a formal program.
Right.
So we would continue that. And then I think over the summer, Principal Gill and I and John Baroflo would sit down and say, okay, what are our sort of flow charts for an implementation plan? What would the process look like for a teacher to be certified and have some here? What would be our low-hanging fruit for classes? We might want to, to Chris's point, offer that, for that, you know, that the teacher might want to do. You know, nobody's going to be forced to do it. I'm just saying, what if we want, we'll work with SLEA to figure out, you know, what do they think about, you know, an implementation plan for this? Because clearly they're a very important key partner for us. And then also the other alternatives are, you know, what does it look like off-campus and outside and slash online? So, yeah, we would probably come back, you know, probably in August with some implementation ideas. But the program already exists anyhow, it's just never been formalized.
Agreed. And I, I'm sitting here thinking about my experience when my kids were still in the school and I was going through the ranks of, you know, freshman and sophomore and junior and then, you know, getting ready for college and college applications and all of that. I just think this to me sounds wonderful. And even though it exists on a smaller level now, I think it needs to be broadcast and explained extremely well to the parent population as well as the students so that they understand the benefits and how it can be used if they, you know, are able to and choose to participate.
Yep. So we'll come forward with some sort of a marketing and communication plan. So if everybody's, you know, have answered their questions and you're generally okay, can I move that we approve this?
Second.
Motion's already tabled, I think.
Is it?
Yeah, we had a motion, we were discussing, and then we tabled.
Can we call the question?
Warm it up for Saturday.
Throw us down, beating on.
So did anybody else have any other questions? No? Okay. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
We don't have to do roll calls anymore, this is it.
I know, I know.
Chris, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make you come back and say aye next time.
I'm fully in agreement. I just think, I want more structure to it.
I get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the time as well. I know that was a lot longer than it was.
Who from?
Christine. Thank you, Paula. I would apologize at the very beginning for my re-pupping little discharge. I spent all this time in ancient sector, carrying my notes, collecting them, putting them away, and I don't have them. So they're somewhere on my desk or, oh my gosh. So let's make it work. All right, you actually have a financial tonight in your package that you can see and feel in touch if you would like. As you know, this has been a very unusual year. There's so many unknowns, financial unknowns. That's what's with the challenge, is not knowing it's going to happen. Some of the things I wanted to bring to your attention is that we do have deficits throughout the budget. It happens all the time. And there are also surpluses that will absorb that. So most categories will self-balance with those items, so it shouldn't be an issue. There are some areas that I would like to bring your attention to. And if you went to page two of the financial for detail, you'll notice the substitute account for middle school is starting to go into a deficit situation and the high school is not far behind. As you know, the school committee committed to having additional long-term subs, building-based substitutes, as well as custodian substitutes. The towns were able to work with us and the towns were able to support some of those positions through their CARES Act funding. And that went through January. They were able to bring us through January the funds they had. Since then, they don't know what their additional allotments are. So we had to, we brought that back into the budget because my concern is if we never get funding for that, we still have to be responsible for it. So that is in our budget right now, showing what that worst-case scenario could be. So that's one of the areas that will not necessarily self-balance. Some of the other areas I wanted to bring to your attention are, if you look at our technology section, that is on the bottom of page two. As I mentioned, the area will self-balance. But because we had so many CARES Act purchases earlier in the year, that has kind of shifted where our needs are within this current budget. So that's why I was starting to see some deficits that maybe aren't necessarily where we'd expect them to be. But as you know, we did make a large amount of purchases through CARES Act funding. So our needs now are a little different than we had anticipated than being when we went into the year. Steve's very thoughtful and mindful about that. He takes, he does a nice job of overseeing that. As we get into utilities, I'm pleased that there's only one area that's a deficit. I was really expecting, it's the high school gas that we're having a deficit right now. I was really expecting that to be more widespread, especially with, we do have some air purifiers, we have HVA systems that are running earlier than normal and later than normal. And we've made lots of updates or changes. So I'm kind of pleased. So that's the only area, you know, there's just that one account we're having a little issue right now. Maintenance areas, you will see some deficits, but that's normal for this late in the year. Whatever happens gets taken care of in the maintenance area whenever anything happens to the building. The unemployment on page five, you see there's a pretty significant deficit there, but that's, for us, it's not unexpected after what happened last spring or the summer. And as you've heard on the news, there's been lots of fraudulent cases. And even though we are on top of, once a claim comes in, we are responding to that claim immediately, whether it's ours, whether it's a false claim. Unfortunately, it takes a state a little longer to kind of catch up with that. So we are still waiting for some credits. But I believe we still have just about $7,000 left as an incumbent. So we believe that will get us to the end of the year. That number should not rise much more than where it is right now. One other thing I wanted to mention is currently, we are still awaiting CARES Act reimbursements from the town. And this is not a flaw in the town, it's just the money falling back from Plymouth County. We have submitted, between the three towns, they've committed to about $400,000 of CARES Act funding for us in the fall. And then what we did is we paid for the items and billed the three towns based on their proportionate share of Silver Lake enrollment. And all the towns were willing to be a part of this. We did three separate billings for that. One of the towns has received a reimbursement for that. So we've only received one reimbursement check for all the reimbursements that we submitted to the town. And then our additional CARES Act funding that we received directly from the state, $146,000, the mechanism for us to seek those funds was finally determined to be through Plymouth County, through Kingston. And that's the area that we pursued, but we have not received all of those reimbursements yet. So I have to be prepared that we may have to bring some of those items back into our operating budget because we may ultimately end up being responsible. But we're still kind of, we're still in waiting motion. The towns have not had, heard of any rejected items based on what we submitted. So that's, I'm optimistic about that. The one bonus for me is that tomorrow I'm participating in the local business manager group meeting and Tom O'Brien is going to be our guest speaker. So he is the treasurer for Plymouth County, who may have some insight on how that's going to happen. And that's a particular issue to us as our regions because we had to pay upfront and now we're waiting for that reimbursement. Or even the other cities and towns of Plymouth County that are waiting for that reimbursement. So I have to believe there has to be some kind of plan of how that could work instead of leaving us in a difficult situation for the year-end. But that's probably the big unknown right now. Right now, I think we're doing okay. Are there any questions? Yes?
Right there.
Sure.
I just have a question. This is, seems to be a perennial topic for us. And maybe it's just that it's not reflective of whatever reimbursements you're supposed to get, but the homeless transportation, is it highly in the negative? Is that because we're waiting reimbursements?
It's kind of unusual that when we went back to school, we went back in a hybrid method. So students weren't here every day. But we have one particular situation that is based on the distance. It's creating a, it's a more financial challenge. Unfortunately, the reimbursement that we get, when we do get it, comes in the following year. So the reimbursement never comes in when the expenditure is happening. They base their reimbursement on the funding that they've allotted for it versus what's submitted to get that reimbursement. So we get that the following year, that's considered a miscellaneous income. This year, we have not yet received the homeless transportation reimbursement from last year.
Really?
But we will. It's based on the end-of-year report when those one-subs are all collected and they accumulate all the information, then compare that to what they have actually in the budget for it. So I would expect it to be coming out this spring.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
Christine, when were they submitted the reimbursements back in January, December, January?
Oh, we, I think our first, well, I want to say the first submission we did to the towns was November. And I know that they're under their own restraints. They might be trying to make it work in their system of reimbursement. But all of the towns, we've talked to all the towns, and they have all submitted their reimbursements. And they've received some reimbursements, but it's things that happened before we had started. So that's a challenge. So I hope tomorrow we get some more information on that.
Texting one of the Plymouth County commissioners right now.
Yeah. And if I could just ask a couple of questions there. Correct me if I'm wrong, everything we submitted, we chatted about with the towns. They had earmarked the funding.
I don't, that is not the problem at all. It's the reimbursement from them that they're waiting for from Plymouth County. That's the delay.
The county.
Okay.
And Plymouth County had said they committed to hiring more people to help clear up their backlog of those reimbursements.
Okay. Okay.
So the towns have been fully cooperative.
All right.
Perhaps they need a reminder that we're approaching our financial closeout?
The towns or Plymouth County?
Both.
Both?
Both, well, the towns, no.
Well, I think, I'm just.
The towns are sympathetic, but that's why I was saying tomorrow morning, Tom O'Brien is going to be at our group meeting that I'm going to be at. So that's a perfect opportunity because it's just a local group of business managers, maybe 15 people. So that'd be a perfect opportunity to ask our specific question.
Yeah. If you find out anything of interest, could you let us know?
I would be happy to. I could send out maybe a response to the invitation for this meeting for tonight.
Right, perfect.
I could do that, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll let you know, I'll let you know one way or the other.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Ryan?
Thank you. So inside your package for this evening, curriculum, instruction, and assessment updates, I just wanted to highlight a few of the items there. So at this point in the year, principals, coordinators, and department heads are submitting proposals for summer curriculum workshops, which would take place before the end of the fiscal year. So with the combination of grant funding, we're thinking about using our understanding-by-design methodology to make sure our curriculum is aligned with standards and giving teachers an opportunity to collaborate together for consistent learning experiences for students. Underneath the instruction bullet, the K-12 ELA task force continues its work. And Silver Lake teachers, Nicola Fannasiv, Carrie Mathias, Ryan Tilly, and the K-6 coordinator, Melissa Fair, have been working on selecting a new K-5 ELA program. And we have secondary involvement with that to make sure that our ELA curriculum is aligned, K-12. So we appreciate the work of the teachers on that task force. For professional development, we have our District Diversity Equity and Inclusion Working Group, where we've started that work this year in the winter and where we partnered with DEI facilitators, Dr. Chris Taylor from DESI and Dr. Des Floyd, looking at educational equity and building the capacity of our district team.[1683.38] equity and building the capacity of our district team. The goal of this working group is to eventually design diversity, equity, and inclusion professional development for our schools. This is important because it aligns with the teacher rubric under standard three, to make sure that all teachers are proficient in supporting the learning needs of students and being aware of students' cultural backgrounds, and making sure we can support everybody consistently. Mr. Dupiel and Mrs. Gill through Mr. Dupiel gave good updates on MCAS and how that's progressing, and we really appreciate the efforts, you know, particularly at the middle school where MCAS has to be, well, can be administered remotely, so we appreciate all the effort that the middle school administration has made to meet the demands of providing in-person testing and remote testing. Under grant updates, SR1 funding that has to be drawn down by September of 2022, so we've used a lot of that funding to support online platforms like CareDeck and other components that teachers use to support hybrid learning. SR2 funding starts on July 1st. Silver Lake has an anticipated 202,000 under SR2, which is the elementary and secondary's emergency relief fund. And lastly, under DESI compliance, we're in, working through tiered focused monitoring, which is ensuring that our programming meets DESI standards once every six years. So thanks to Lana Tereshko, our English language program teacher who's working with me to make sure that everything for Silver Lake is submitted by June 4th. Thank you.
Any questions for Ryan? Okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, superintendent's report.
Thank you. Tonight in your package, you'll see a proposed meeting schedule for the 21-22 school year. And Silver Lake is listed in blue, and the joint committee meetings are listed in black at the bottom. We have three dates proposed for joint committee meetings. We had talked about the possibility of consolidating some of our presentations, and we would like to try that out and see if that's effective. For November, we're proposing a special education technology and any shared cost presentation that we could have one presentation as opposed to four separate presentations, but certainly still allow school committees to ask any follow-up questions that are particular to their unique school and district needs. In February, we would propose a shared cost budget vote and shared cost contracts to be reviewed at that time. That seems to be a time of year that is, would best fit our budget schedule and our contractual obligations for our shared cost positions. And then in April would be an opportune time to go over a district update with regards to our strategy for district improvement, and then that could coincide with the administrative review, which happens around that time of year as well. So that would be our proposal for joint school committee meetings and trying to anticipate and consolidate some of those presentations. And we'd like to see how that works, and we're certainly open to revisiting it, but we're hopeful that this might be a helpful way to foster communication and collaboration across the districts as well. So I have presented that to you. Also, if you're, if you are ready to vote that tonight, that would be something that eventually would need to be voted upon by all of the districts in order for it to become our actual meeting schedule.
Okay. So, good.
Just had one question. One of the items that we had talked about was having the school committee walk around each one of the buildings. And I know that's probably a little easier to do for the elementary school and the intermediate school, but I didn't know if you wanted to pick one of these meetings for each school to do the walk around before. Because I think with the new committee members coming on, I think having a walk around the school and looking at things is important.
So you're suggesting, like, pick two dates and do a 5:30 walk around with the committee meeting starting at 6:00, or?
I would suggest that, yeah. I don't know, for half an hour, is enough time to walk around.
I know. It's agreed.
So I apologize, I don't recall this conversation, it may have been a conversation that I wasn't part of. Are you referring to a walk around for all school committee members, or just for new members to get to know the buildings that they're, for their district, or is this a joint school committee? I think we should all.
I think we had previously talked, it might have been two years ago now.
Okay.
That was, the idea was to have all the committees walk around, check out the building, and just do a walk around before school started. That's what the idea was at the time, but where you have the meetings listed here, and you have all the new members coming on, I think it would be ideal to just have everyone have a walk around, see why you're here, what the classroom's looking at. CTE is very interesting to go see. I just think it's a good idea. It doesn't have to be part of the schedule.
I agree, I think it might be helpful, and maybe it's a nice gesture from the admin to maybe do that 5:30, and set, for Silver Lake specifically, on September 9th, we'll take a half hour of CTE, that'll take half hour off, and then maybe do the middle school another week. So I don't mean to extend in the evening, but to maybe start it earlier, so if someone has interest for a non-formal meeting, maybe get a tour of the middle school one night, CTE another, high school another, just like you say, it takes a year for the students in the school to get around and figure out what's what, and not get lost. Because we come in one door, we go right to our meetings.
Leslieanne, vaguely remember this discussion?
But I remember feeling that way when I first came on, even though I've spent a lot of time in both buildings, especially as it relates to some of the safer issues that come to us, because, you know, there's just a lot of facility issues that, I mean, I trust the committee to do their job, but just to get eyes on certain things would be kind of nice. And one of the things that Michaela suggested was have, you know, school committee members come to, Jim, help me out here, come to either Step Up Day or some part of that, when the young, yeah, the sixth graders are coming to seventh graders, because then you kind of get the same program that they would have liked here, is the cafeteria, this is what the.
That's a good idea.
You know, just have the school committee go to the high school Step Up Day and the middle school Step Up Day, if possible, we're welcoming them, because they all kind of have the red carpet out that day for the new students anyhow, correct?
Absolutely, yeah. You guys are welcome to any events that we have, whether it be a student event after school, or whether it be something that's a critical piece in our transitional movement from the three elementary schools, which come to the middle school, then our seventh grade, transition to the eighth grade that day, then the eighth grader then welcomed up into the high school that day, and they, and they become part of the high school for that day. So all those are really key components to our transitional time, and again, to reduce anxiety for our students and become more comfortable and familiar with our schools. So there's a lot of those key components that Leslie's talking about, that we inform our students, and kind of walk them through the school and walk them through some of the pieces of our school.
Just a note thing, seeing that I'm stepping off the committee, I like to remind them.
Well, before you do that, there's also a CTE day, right? That if you were an eighth grader that's interested in CTE, you can come one night and look at it, too. So that may be another option, just a bit more in-depth.
Yeah.
So just a thought. All right, guys, you're leaving? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so John, John and I set up a day, was the beginning of, end of August, beginning of September, where I walked around with some of the staff members, just to check out what the working conditions were like as part of the negotiations. Because one of the issues that everyone's going to find out is we always talk about the heat or the cooling in the rooms, and just so a member of the school committee goes and experiences that.
Sits upstairs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you get to see some of the staff, too, walking around, and, you know, part of being on the committee is not just working with administration, but showing support to the staff, knowing that we care about them, and we want them to be successful, the students that we're sending to them. So just making, I mean, it doesn't have to be a formal meeting, but it could be a meeting where the school committee just posts a special time, walks around, sees like what the conditions are like.
No, it's a, it's a good thought.
I'm just trying to add some more meeting dates for you guys.
And then he's going to leave.
Yeah, really. So can I still move this calendar as it is?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, same none, all those in favor?
Aye.
The next item is the district updates and other updates that came out this week. Despite the FAQs that came out this week and the governor's announcement about the COVID-related restrictions ending on May 29th, one thing that is going to remain in place is that all of the federal U.S. Department of Agricultural School meal flexibilities that were announced on April 20th are still going to remain in effect through June 30th through 2022, so we can anticipate a summer meal program once again with free meals for our, for our students. And it was also announced that youths ages 12 and up can now be vaccinated with the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine. And the Massachusetts State Government has set up a website at mass.gov/vaccinesforyouth, and our school nurses are working on a communication to send out to parents with regards to opportunities for children 12 and older. Summer learning opportunities, we did receive some correspondence from Representative Linatra's office reminding us of the opportunities, the grant opportunities that are available for summer programming. Silver Lake has a number of summer programs available this summer to support our students and to address the needs that may have emerged over the last year and a half, two years. So the first one is called the Accelerated Learning Academy, and this is designed to support students most affected by COVID-19. The program focuses on literacy, math, and social emotional learning. The academy is designed to accelerate the student learning through engaging, standards-aligned, project-based lessons. This is for students grades, currently in grades two through five, or students entering grades three through six. That will take place at the Kingston Intermediate School. The Silver Lake Enhancement Program, the Silver Lake Middle School Enhancement Program will offer a summer program to selected students entering grades seven and eight. Invited students are invited to participate in a program designed to enhance the transition to middle school. Students will participate in activities supporting their literacy, math, and social emotional growth. And then we also have an extended school year program. It's a program to support students with disabilities who are likely to fall behind without summer programming. The child's IEP team will determine through data gathered from each of the IEP goal areas whether the regression would likely to be substantial, and whether the child would require a greater than usual time to return to the achievement prior to the break. So that's how eligibility is determined for that particular summer program. And I know that our staff continue to consider ways, to consider opportunities for students over the summer months, but those are the three main programs that will be offered at different age groups to address student learning needs over the summer. And that is all I had for.
Couple of questions, Chris?
Oh, I was just wondering if you get staffing for all those programs, or if the staff is fatigued and running away for the summer?
So that's a common theme that I'm hearing in many districts. So while the funding is available, I think we'll have variability with regards to whether or not we'll be able to find, whether it will be staffed by our staff, or if we'll have to go to post outside of the school district for staffing. I know that some districts are experiencing difficulty with staffing some of the programs. At this point, we're hopeful that we're going to be able to staff all of our programs, but there, there could be circumstances where we have to go outside of our current staffing and hire someone for summer program if necessary, but yes, there, there is that sense, not only for staff, but also for students as well, as you can, as you can imagine. So I, I think while there, there might be a desire to continue education on the part of many people, there's, there's also a need for a break and possible opportunities for students to regain some normalcy, hopefully over the summer months. That's also important for them.
I was actually just going to say that and piggyback on this question, our comment that I have heard in other districts, and, you know, even amongst the children that I interact with, that they're just done. And so even though the intention is well thought, I think everybody is fatigued from four to 40, you know?
Leslieanne?
So just a question, Joe, on the extended school year program for those children on IEPs, of which it's described in their IEP chart or checkbox. Is that program being improved at all to include things beyond just academic regression? Because the experience that I've had over the 12 years in the district has given me certain types of IEP needs and not others. And although you may have extended school year in your IEP, the chances are you're, you may or may not get it, because it may or may not actually be appropriate for your needs on your IEP grid, for instance, or your, I should say, not your grid, your goals.
So, again, the general, it's actually a legal requirement.
Yep, I understand.
So I, my understanding is that they use the goals to determine whether or not a child is eligible.
Right.
I would need to speak with Marie in terms of, you know, to what extent they provide additional, and I believe what I'm hearing you say is kind of a social emotional or social skills types of development as well.
Yeah, so if your team determines that you qualify for extended school year, doesn't always mean that you opt for it because the program itself is really only focused on academic regression and not access to the curriculum regression? And as you know, that access to the curriculum regression can take a variety of different forms? And so I'm just wondering if you can maybe get us some feedback on whether or not that program is actually being improved?
I can, I can speak with Marie and get back to you.
Okay, thanks.
Then I don't want to misspeak and.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll get back to you.
Yeah, you can tell I have some experience on that. So, thanks.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
That's it? Okay. New business? We have nothing under new business. Old business, the first two items, I'm going to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
On new business?
Yep.
The capital plan and the presentation of those items to the towns, I think is something that we should add as an agenda item for new business for the next time.
Or do you, or should it fall under safer? Because I contemplated putting it under the safer. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. True. You're not allowed to suggest new business, young man.
No, I was not.
Nope, he's just going to be sitting in the audience next time going, wait, Matt.
Motion denied.
He's going to pull out a lawn mower, he says, here are the 18 things you, we should add. Yep, that's, that's coming up.
You're not allowed to come to any more meetings either. You can't just show up anymore.
Yeah. With cookies, and he owes us, you want to have our.
Yeah, I do owe you guys cookies, so.
Yeah. So all this is the update of the regional agreement and the development of school committee policies. I think come September, we should look at those, and actively look at those. It's just been a little bit crazy, obviously, for other reasons. Dual enrollment, I think we covered a little bit earlier.
So, Madam Chair, on old business, it seems that we've removed a longstanding old business item on here, which is school start times?
No, that's actually a committee.
Was, I don't know, for the last, I don't know, 36 meetings we've had? I thought it was always under old business.
No, it's a subcommittee that's gone dormant.
Yeah.
Yep. So reports of subcommittees, Silver Lake Educational Association. John, even though you're wearing a mask, I did recognize you.
Could you be here for a minute? Jesus. Just trying to get a little attention. So first of all, after the board, we ratified the sports contract this afternoon, so that's all set. I'd like to also echo what Dr. Prue and Bill were saying, it's great to have kids back in the school full time. I was totally remote myself, so getting that much more sort of normal is a great thing, and really happy that they're in school. You know, a tremendous amount of work obviously went into making that happen in a very short amount of time, and I just want to acknowledge on behalf of SLEA, administration, coordinators, department heads, guidance, and David Murphy, doing all that work to get that all together in such a short amount of time. You know, Dr. Prue also mentioned earlier about the vaccinations being available now to age 12 and up, and we really appreciate the school encouraging students to get vaccinated, and more students to be vaccinated, the safer it's going to be, and the quicker we can return to normal. So, you know, hopefully come fall, the more normal it is now, and we got our fingers crossed, thank you so much.
Thank you. Go ahead, Summer.
I just, something he said really struck me. Encouraging students to get vaccinated, that is not our role as a school to be doing that. I have an issue with that, and I don't, I'm trying to speak without becoming across emotional...
And I don't, I'm trying to speak without becoming across emotional. I don't think that that's our place as a school to be doing that. If they're children, they're minors, we can send notification home to the parents to have that discussion, but I think it's out of line for our teachers and staff to be having that discussion with minors. I'm sorry, I'm like, I just have, I think it's, I see it happening across the country in districts, and I see very, very concerned parents coming home irate that people who are not that child's parent are having that conversation about their healthcare decisions, and I find it highly inappropriate if that's what we're doing.
No, I believe the nurses are putting together an informational notice to families that would go out through Parents Square.
Okay, to the parents. So we don't have teachers in classrooms encouraging students to be vaccinated? I hope that is not the case.
I don't believe that to be the case.
Okay.
Yeah, Summer, just to be clear on behalf of SLEA, I have not suggested that teachers are going to be speaking to students about the matters in class. I do think it's important that the school put that information out there like Dr. Prue said. And, you know, of course, it is the role sometimes for schools to mandate certain vaccines. Not that I'm per se.
We don't mandate. We don't mandate.
I, what we mandate certain vaccines, but this is the conversation we have at right now.
We don't mandate them. Sure, no. We might ask.
Yeah, there's not a conversation to be had right now by the IEP stadium that the school mandates certain vaccines, which we do mandate.
There are assumptions for parents, and that's a conversation that they have in the privacy of their home. And so, but like I said, it seems to be a trend that's happening where I personally believe it's a crossing of the line as a parent and as a community member, and I just don't think it's appropriate. And so when you said encouraging our students over the age of 12, that raised a huge red flag for me, where I hope that that's not happening between teachers and students in the classroom. And that it is correspondence from the school nurses going to parents through Parents Square. That I find completely appropriate, providing information, things of that nature, but that's a private health conversation for parents and children to have in their family home.
We agree with you on that.
Okay, good.
Thanks for the thinking, Mark.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. That's all.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just on the SLEA report, if you don't mind. So as a member of the negotiating committee, I want to say publicly thank you, John, to you and your SLEA negotiating team. We have spent a lot of time together over the last year and a half, and even prior to that, Gordon can attest to that, and so can Chris. And I know at times it's been difficult, and I just hope that we've done the school community and our employees justice, and I just want to thank you for sticking with us through it.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Okay, administrative review. We have had our meeting. We have collected the superintendent evaluations from a member of the school committee members. The committee has reviewed the results, digested, distilled it down, and we have the evaluation to present to our superintendent next week. So, good work by that committee. CTE?
No meeting.
Okay. Chairman's report, I have not received any correspondence. Legislative agent?
So I did request that Kathy Lanatra's office look at the Chapter 70 funding formula and see why it changed around the 2006 fiscal year and why it's not broken out by town anymore. If you look at the way the assessments and the regional agreement are set forth, each town is supposed to be getting credit for its own Chapter 70 funding. And right now, what happens is Silver Lake gets one number and it's taken off the top. And I think if it went back to the funding formula, the way that the regional agreement's written to, you might see Halifax be less likely to say that they can't afford things. Right now, if you take the foundation formula minus the minimum contribution and you add up those numbers for each of the three towns, you would see that Silver Lake is getting more in aid than with the foundation budget versus minimum aid, because that's how the elementary schools receives their Chapter 70 funding. If you added up the three towns, we should be getting around $7.2 million, and we actually get over $8 for the Chapter 70 number. So we're held harmless to about an $800,000 number. So I think if we looked at the regional agreement and each town got credit for foundation minus minimum, required minimum contribution, and that section was applied to each town separately, and the amount that's held harmless was applied across the top, it might be more palatable for the town. And that was something that I brought to their attention to find out why the formula has not, the formula actually stayed the same, but that budget cycle year, they stopped splitting it out for town.
Lesleyan?
Do they do that for all regions?
Yes.
Yeah.
But from the perspective of the town of Halifax, with the changing in the numbers, Silver Lake voted, Halifax voted no to the assessment number at our last town meeting. And as the population shifts back, we're about, you know, one point, so 1% is about $180,000. So Halifax is supposed to shift back and take a larger percentage of Silver Lake. So each percentage points an additional $180,000. So one town saves, the other town takes the hit. And I think it will be extremely hard for the town of Halifax moving forward over the next three to four years to hit the number with that change, because Silver Lake is also going to grow the number as well between five and up. So you're looking at additional 140. So Halifax prop two and a half number each year is about 350. Sorry. 400, 450 for the upcoming year. So we'd be looking at taking 380,000 to 400,000 just for Silver Lake for one percentage point with a nominal growth for Silver Lake. And that's not, that's not going to be sustainable for the town. So unless some formula change happens where the town actually gets credit, and I'm not saying to do what Whitman Hansen region did, because that doesn't work. But the formula and the amount of money that Halifax should be getting credit for the aid, when you look at the numbers based on elementary, aid needs a lot more to the town of Halifax than it does to the town of Plington or Kingston.
Each of you in just a moment, the one thing I want to say is I believe we need to meet with the towns not only to go through our capital plan with them all in one room hearing the same thing and gaining some agreement as to how we approach conquering the capital plan, but I think sustainability is also a topic for that same meeting or a meeting, because I do agree, we've reached the point where we really need to agree as a region, perhaps not agree, but discuss these topics as a region and see what we can do with them. That's me as one individual. And I, Lesleyan first, and then Chris.
Just because Gordon's leaving us, although we know where to find you.
Probably be sitting up there.
Yeah. Is it possible, Madam Chair, to ask Gordon if he could maybe write up this in like a memo to us? Because I feel like although you, it's a lot to digest. It's a lot to digest, and I think maybe just a discussion of the issue and then, you know, the potential recommendations that you have would be useful to us going forward.
You got homework.
Yeah, just, I was gonna say that, you have homework.
I must admit, I didn't do very much while I was here.
Now you're gonna make up for that.
So my question is, when you're saying the town is calculated differently in aid versus the region's aid calculation for Halifax, is it almost like a student goes from seventh grade to eighth grade and is getting $100, and sorry, in sixth grade getting $100, when they move to seventh grade, Halifax is getting $0.90 credit or something? Is that kind of the way, difference between Halifax and Silver Lake?
So when you, when you look at the number, you get the foundation budget on that spreadsheet, right? Then you get the minimum contribution, and then you see the number for the Chapter 70 aid. But when you look at Silver Lake's number, the aid number here really has nothing to do with the aid number in Silver Lake because of how long Silver Lake's been held harmless.
Okay.
So the amount of money that the minimum, we are above the minimum contribution numbers right now.
Yeah.
By a fair amount. So the amount that Halifax can afford based on what the town actually has is not being looked at in the funding formula.
Gotcha. So if foundation funding is here and we're spending 20% above that now, you're saying that Halifax can't quite, or 20% above foundation, but 18 or 15 with the average growth there is more of a reasonable place? And that's where Halifax schools are? They're a lower level of overfunding above minimum contribution? I understand that the comparable.
So percentage-wise, Halifax should be getting about 45%
Yeah.
of the cost of schools.
Yep.
Plington should be getting 25%, and Kingston's supposed to be around a third. So when we add up all the money and everyone gets credit for the same.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. That's not my fault. Okay, so we should almost take, yeah. I love a memo, though.
I'm gonna get screenshots of it.
We have a memo. Sorry.
Thank you.
And thank you. Negotiations? I think you gave a nice little comment there. We are going to go into executive session just briefly after this meeting to talk about negotiations. PAC?
PAC met first Tuesday of the month, I think it is. I was not in town, but Sheila gave me a report. We know that Sheila Bond is the chair of the PAC group. And they went over the evaluation of the director slash principal, because their person is doing both roles and will probably continue to do both roles for at least the next six months. And she got an exemplary rating, which is pretty remarkable considering those are two big roles to fill. I did have some more information about enrollment. We're looking at enrollment going up. The census has been a little low, but I don't have that specific on me. So on, in our, is it July meeting? Is that where we're meeting next? I'll have a full report for you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Policy, as indicated, I think we're gonna see a meeting come up on that. Revolving funds, no meeting. Safer?
No meeting, but we're working with town meeting on the article we presented, and the stabilization fund is off the table after two towns voted already against it.
Right. Tennis courts are, Plington won, Halifax, go ahead.
Halifax a no, Halifax a yes, and Kingston's a Saturday.
So from the way I understand that article, Plinton's money can be used to be spent on the courts. It doesn't have to be all three towns say yes, but I'm not sure if that's enough money to even bring the equipment in. Because the way that the SRO went previously, we were allowed to spend Plinton's money on that, so I think it follows the same pattern. Halifax did support the SRO for the middle school, so both communities supported that. But I think if Kingston supports it.
The tennis court?
The tennis court. I think you can probably get some work done, but I'm not sure that it's fair to those two towns to fund something where Halifax doesn't come up for it. And as much as I wear multiple hats, Silver Lake should never do this again. Silver Lake should just put the money into the assessment and say, here you go.
Into the budget.
Into the budget. Put it in there, because we do have a section for repairs and replacement of equipment. You put it in there.
Gordon, so two towns passing the tennis court article does not force Halifax?
Correct.
Why is that?
Because it's a warrant article, and there's nothing that requires, because of the way we went about it, there's nothing that requires the other town to pay for it. If it's in the assessment, then two towns passing requires the towns to do it. And from wearing the Silver Lake hat, I think Silver Lake went forward with a good plan to get those tennis courts fixed. I'm not sure that we did a good job of communicating this time because we didn't have that one big meeting that we've been going to. But I don't see any reason why Silver Lake would not just put these things into the budget moving forward, because trying to put something in an article, and if two towns pass it, the third doesn't, it stops the district from accomplishing its goals. So I would, I would not vote to put something outside an article again. I would put it right into the assessment and say, this is the, this is the best thing for Silver Lake moving forward, and we need you to support it. We asked you to support articles before, you gave us feedback that you didn't want things in articles, because that's what we keep hearing about the SRO. We don't want it in an article, we want it in the assessment. Okay, here you go, here, it's in the assessment. Two towns, two towns move forward with it, then the third town has to say yes. Unfortunately, I don't think the town Halifax would be able to afford it, but from wearing the Silver Lake hat, put it into the assessment and move forward.
Right, because the SRO situation was such that we could reduce the hours, you know, to make it work, not work, but I mean, make it a go of it. But to your point, that money from Plinton and potentially Kingston won't be enough to make the project viable.
No, and two towns should not bear that burden.
No.
I completely, I was under the belief, just like everything else, we've always voted, if two towns voted it, it would force the third town.
That's my understanding as well in the article, the budgetary article.
It doesn't, it didn't read that way to me. Maybe Christina and Jill could have a different viewpoint.
We can talk to Fred and see what he says. I thought we had it straight squared up that way, but I don't know.
Because when you think about it, our attempt to do it this way, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have made sense if we had known it was going to be piecemeal. The SRO is a different animal because of Kingston having an officer in the high school fully funded, and I mean, that's just a different ball of wax to tackle because of the complexity of needing a Kingston officer and what have you, and benefits and everything. But I was absolutely under the impression that two towns passing that article would force a third town to fund that article.
For me, that kind of fit into a gray area with the regulations for regions. So I've actually sought out additional information just to have a clear understanding, because we have not pursued this avenue.
No, we never have.
So we haven't had the ramifications of that. Everything else has been the two thirds, but I understand what Gordon's saying, that because it was done as an article, then that put it, that has a different standard. So I'm just trying to confirm that, because I don't know the absolute answer for that. I have not run into that predicament before.
Okay, because Kingston votes Saturday, right?
Well, it would be, Madam Chair, it'd be great to get some clarification before Saturday, because if that's the case, we'll just pull the article, because it isn't a point debating it.
There's no point doing two courts out of four.
No, I don't disagree. I don't disagree.
Well, are there a point in doing two courts out of four?
Well, because the construction costs of getting the equipment.
No, I would, I get it. The goal is just to, yeah.
I mean, it would be the Band-Aid approach of repaint it, reseal it, get two years.
And then have to redo the whole thing again.
Two years, yeah.
But, sorry, Madam Chair, but to your point earlier, it's not fair that, you know, these are regional courts, these are not Kingston courts, so.
Just so the committees.
I'm just not saying we're gonna let the Kingston and Plington players. It's not saying we're gonna let the Kingston, Plimpton players go play on it and the Halifax players have to sit out and watch, right? This is a regional asset, so we can't be asking two towns to pay for it.
I don't disagree there in the least.
I just wanted the committee to know that at the meeting, we were told we had to take it from stabilization and failed the two-thirds vote. At the end of the night, when there was a article to move funds into stabilization, they tried to put under, uh, three hundred thousand of undesignated fund revenue into stabilization. And I then asked, and summer moved to reconsider, to change the funding source on the tennis court to undesignated fund revenue, but that failed as an attempt at the end of the night.
Because we, there was a complexity that we had lost our quorum and somebody-
It got very Kingston in there.
Yeah.
And I was, and I was like, that's how I learned to do a motion to reconsider was going to Kingston's town meeting. You guys are famous for it.
Oh, yeah.
But I have to say, I was speaking to an elected official in Kingston and the response I got regarding tennis courts was kind of what we're talking about right now. Well, Halifax students are still using those courts, so how can we not ask Halifax to like pitch in a little bit? Like, we can't have Kingston and Plimpton footing the bill and then allowing Halifax to go along for the ride. And, you know, it's just not fair.
Yes, SRO argument.
It's the SRO argument.
Yeah.
No. We're, we're, th- this is a region.
I know.
And the assets are, as we talked about, in-town meeting. They are the assets of the region, all three towns. No, that has to be funded by all three.
And, and Paul, does that get our town meetings?
Gordon, if I allow you to speak, are you going to share some good news with the committee?
Are we on school start time?
I'm not gonna let you take your chair. I'm home with you if you, if you don't make more positive comments right now.
I would suggest that the committee reaches out to our attorney
Yeah.
and, and double-check the interpretation that I was given because it was different for the town of Halifax. So, maybe, maybe Fred will come back and say, if an article moves forward, then all three towns are responsible.
Yeah, I, and, and if we could let Fred know, this is urgent, urgent because it's Saturday. Please.
Yeah, my first thought was that I would contact Jesse to see what, um, you know, they have oversight of regions to see what their insight was on that, but we can do both.
Yeah.
That's my good news.
Okay. Um, anything else, Chris?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
If we get an answer that goes when we get, I may have Saturday offer.
No, we give more than just the tennis courts, don't you?
That's it for me. Stabilization fund's not moving.
Yeah, that's enough.
That's true.
The, the budget. Oh, right.
Well, as a, as a citizen, yes. Yes. But I'm not presenting.
Okay, okay. Just wanna get our ducks in a row.
And, and just as a matter of full disclosure, and I, I think you all know it anyway because we've, we've disclosed it, is, um, Halifax also did not support our regional budget. Plimpton did support it and we're looking forward to the results from Kingston as well. That will push our budget as we put forth forward for the year by all three towns. So, that's important at town meeting for Kingston. Yes, Gordon. Mr. Andrews, in the corner, please.
Did, did you wanna just inform the members of two towns? So, if two towns vote no, then the school committee has to meet again, vote a budget, and then the towns have thirty days to, to call another town meeting. So, it's a process.
The back and forth volley till we come to another agree on, yeah.
So, threaten Kingston with another town meeting if they don't-
Well, and I, I, I think the indications we've gotten from discussions with Kingston is I, I think they're, um, looking at it favorably. Now, the townspeople will make the final decision, but I, our discussions have been positive with them.
Yeah.
So.
I think maybe Madam Chair, next Halifax town meeting, I'd like to be invited as a non-resident.
You can, oh, you don't. They're fun.
I know.
Apologies tonight.
Leslie, and you wanna be in Puerto Rico or something? Have a, a Mai Tai on the beach.
You, you might've missed the Kingston Rooster Chicken debate during one of our town meetings. Were you there?
It'll be the Saturday.
It's on the end of Saturday, so you can-
Come on back.
It's coming back.
It's coming back.
Oh, we can-
Oh, this is, this'll be later. I have to know this now because the topic is much more interesting than I've, I've heard debated for a long time.
Now, all time, but after me. But thank you to Plimpton for proving the budget. Appreciate it.
Good heavens. Okay, school start time. Leslie, and you wanted to chat a little bit about this, I think.
Yeah, I, we've had this on our agenda, Madam Chair, as you know, for a while and it's obviously there to make a point, um, because we're not exactly, you know, doing a lot of rolling up our sleeves on it lately. But I understand, um, Jill and, um, Ryan, that you all might be looking at a whole host of things that worked this year, that might be good things to consider for, let's just say, structural changes to the, our educational system, just saying. You have to come out of this learning something, right? So, one of the things that I think that we've learned is, uh, you know, the school start time issue, although it's super complicated for a regional district and I understand the transportation issues. If we don't continue to actually talk about it in any rigor, I think it needs to come off here, but I would argue that it's probably come fall, something we should actually maybe talk about again. So, I'd like to say that Jill, maybe if on your list of things that you were evaluating for pros and cons, I'd like this to be discussed. There are a number of schools that are, had later start times because of COVID and are keeping them. Not clear there are a lot of them, most of them aren't regional districts. So, I would like us to do a little bit of research into a regional district system that might consider some start child changes.
If, if I could, um, jump in as well, I think if any of us have some of the prior research and surveys that were done, not that they're, they're, they're very aged at this point, but, um, what we've done in the past is we've looked at this topic as almost a subcommittee, but the subcommittee, I believe, has been inclusive. It's, it's almost like a joint union subcommittee, obviously, because it affects all the schools. So, if we're gonna go down this path, I almost wanna say administration is, is certainly a, a resource, but I think we need to have a group of school committee members really kind of look at this and, and, and- I think we've looked at it while I've been on the school committees and, and between the elementary and Silver Lake, I've probably been on the school committee about fifteen years now collectively. And I think we've looked at it two or three times during that, that period of time. And it, it, it is, um, it, in the past, it's been plagued with a number of challenges that the subcommittee has ultimately just said, we, we can't get past this. I completely agree with you. These are new, new times, you know, uncharted waters because we've been through so much the last year. What now can we successfully bring forth? So, I commend you for kind of bringing this topic up now. But I do believe it should probably be driven, and after we reorganize and the other committees reorganize, maybe it becomes a joint effort with some sort of joint subcommittee if the committees decide to go forward with it.
Yeah, I agree. I just think maybe over the summer, we could take a look at some of the past data and some of the discussion. Maybe, maybe for the adification of those of us who either are new or who haven't been through one of those two or three real, in, you know, in-depth looks at them. And it may also be something that we may just wanna consider collecting new data because, you know, it's, it's been old.
Clearly, clearly. Yep. Let me, for our July eighth meeting, let me see what I can locate from the most recent effort that, that probably makes the most sense and share it just as a, a backdrop to this discussion.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Paul, I was gonna say maybe we end the joint school committee meetings in November.
Yeah, yeah.
Like you said, instead of one school committee, you get all four of us together. So, hey, because those three committees may say, have no, no interest in it, in which case we oughta stop them.
And then we, then we put it to bed, do you know what I mean?
Maybe we do.
Okay, Treasurers Report.
You can help with that. Last week, we had warrants that were electronically signed by the superintendent as well as a signature subcommittee of Eric Crown, Chris Eklund, and Gordon Andrews. They signed, let's see, nineteen vendor and student activity warrants totaling nine hundred seven thousand six hundred seventy-seven dollars and thirty cents. Three payroll warrants totaling two million four hundred ninety-four thousand six hundred sixty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. For a total of three million four hundred two thousand three hundred forty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. But unfortunately, I'm losing one of my single signature people. So, wondering if there'd be another person who would like to join our little group.
Do you wanna tackle that at our next meeting, Christine, when we've got-
The only thing is I'm gonna have a warrant in between.
Okay.
And Gordon's, um, as of June eighth first. And we will have June, June, as of June first. We will have June warrants that would need to be electronically signed.
And you need to do something to authorize that, right?
We would take a vote of the committee. We could, for this to get through, we could use you because you are an alternate.
Okay.
So, we could use you as the alternate.
Okay, okay. Sure.
He's okay.
Yeah. Very good. Okay, and then Union Thirty-One, we do have a meeting next week, the twenty-seventh. Okay, future dates?
That confirmed? Do we get it?
Yes, we do have a, we do have a form now.
Okay.
Yep. Before I entertain a, a motion to go into executive session, Mr. Andrews, we, we have to bid farewell. This is the last Silver Lake meeting for, for Gordon. And I, um, a lot of times I, I sort of defer to the committee to, to speak on things and then I, I wait and if I have further comment, but I just feel the need to say, you have been a tremendous asset to this committee. Your finance committee background coupled with your ability to just think out of the box has been overwhelmingly beneficial to this committee. And I'm dating myself here a little bit by saying, and I've said this to you before, it's almost like when E.F. Hutton talks, everybody listens, so I'm totally dating myself here. Because everybody's like, when you do, you, you open your mouth and everybody absolutely listens and digests. And you've always pointed us in a very good direction to pursue. And I'm going to, all of the committee members contribute tremendously, but I'm going to miss what you give us. I'm gonna miss your wisdom and I'm going to miss your humor. Both. And I can't thank you enough for having sat on this committee.
Thank you very much.
We're also bidding farewell, although she's been gracious enough to stay a few more weeks, to our wonderful, wonderful Lisa. And Lisa, I have to tell you, I thought contractually you weren't allowed to retire. I, I, I have asked Jill to pull your contract because I sincerely believe you are supposed to just be here. Lisa, you have been such a wealth of knowledge as well and, um, you, you're sort of like the, um, the historical gatekeeper of so many pieces of knowledge of this district. And, uh, when and doubt so many times, we've looked at each other and then looked at you and you give us the answer that we're, we're looking for. And it, you've been absolutely wonderful to work with and you're so easy to work with and-
It's been a pleasure working with everybody. I, I, I love it, I have to say. But it's time.
And we wish you well.
I will miss every single person that I work with and all the school committee members. I really enjoy everybody, but it's time for me to leave.
Good for you. Enjoy your time.
You're like, I'm out.
Not yet. I got till July. I'll still be emailing you. You'll still-
And you plan to take your chair with you as well?
I think I'll leave the chair behind.
Okay. Gordon may want it. He could have a pair.
Gordon can have mine, then he can have a set.
I don't know if anybody else has any comments again. I-
I would like just to say thank you to everyone. I got to sit over there and I got to sit up here. And you get to see so much more of how the school operates, what it takes from the staff, the administration. I got to see a lot of the student, um, displays as a member of the committee. One of the most touching moments was our eighteen to twenty-two-year-old program that came before us that, that truly moved me. Going to graduation, I hope everyone here takes the time to go to graduation and just see what, why we spend all this time here talking. It, it's for moments like that. And those do give you a sense of accomplishment because it's one of the things that you don't really get as you fight about bad budgets year after year. But going to graduation does give you a, a sense of accomplishment as a member of the school committee. So, I would encourage everyone to do that.
And it's on Friday night now, so you don't have to swelter in the heat anymore.
Yeah, really.
May I just say a few words about Gordon? I just wanted to thank him, especially as a new superintendent, for his support throughout this, this whole year and a half. Um, I think what many people don't realize is that, um, Gordon advocated, um, quickly with a number of different community, um, institutions to make sure that our schools had what they needed, um, with regards to safety measures. And he anticipated needs before they were even brought to him. So, as soon as CARES funding became available, um, it was, it was Gordon who was reaching out to multiple community members, um, and not just in his town of Halifax, but beyond Halifax to try to coordinate and to make sure that our students and staff were safe and that his administrative team felt supported. And, um, I think that, um, not everyone gets to see those private aspects that we have the pleasure of seeing and getting to know from our school committee members, what you do behind the scenes. And, and tonight I'm speaking to Gordon because it's his last night at our meeting here, but I know he's gonna be out there. Anyway, but I, I just, um, I felt compelled to share that with the, the community as well because I don't think, um, they always get to see the, the work that our volunteers put into this. And I know this has been a very difficult year for all of our school committee members. And I think, um, I think we were very fortunate to have such strong, knowledgeable, caring, um, experts who, um, who, who were willing to look at things from multiple perspectives, who were willing to debate and discuss what would be best for our students, who treated each other and the community with the utmost respect and, and care. And I thank you for that because I know it has been a, a, a very difficult year for everyone here. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Lisa, as everyone knows, I adore and could not have survived without her, but I have more time to, to, to thank her and beg her not to go.
Well, I get to say something for, about communicating. Lisa, Lisa always picks up the phone. She always has, she always has a great take on how to move forward with things and she knows where to go. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
We all burst into tears when we move into executive session.
Okay, with that, I would take a motion to adjourn and go into executive session, with, uh, return to public session to, uh, share any, uh, votes, please. So, executive session for security matter discussions pursuant to MGL C thirty A, section twenty-one, sub A four, and possible discussion of Silver Lake support staff in non-union personnel negotiations pursuant to MGL C thirty A, section twenty-one, A two, three, please.
So, move.
Second. Okay. Rope on.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. And I'm a yes. Okay. Can I suggest a break of a couple of minutes as well?
Sure.